Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Romero. Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're running slightly behind. We're going to move quickly into the Regula. Let's call this leading to order. We'll call.
Mayor Tonita Gudlehion?
Present.
Counselor David L. Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Barbara Casey?
Yes, here.
Counselor Vincent Howell?
Here.
Counselor David A. Unibody Jr.?
Counselor Unibody is out. He had a doctor's appointment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have a question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence.
Moment of silence. Let's just think about all the mean things that are happening out there in this world and to help for us to really look at ourselves and get that meanness out of us and love each other and really respect each other. I think those thoughts need to be in our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tuchel.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
What is the point?
And, Mayor?
Counselor Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Howell, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Next item is approval of the minutes of July 12th and July 19th of 2017.
What is the priority board?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Casey.
I move approval of the minutes for July 12th and July 19th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Next item is mayor's appointments or reports.
I have none at this point.
Mayor's recognitions or proclamations.
None either.
Public input we do have.
Okay.
First is Rosalie Lopez in reference to refugees.
Hello, Councilmember. May I ask?
Yes.
We were extremely disappointed that the opposition to the resolution seemed to point to things that were actually not in the resolution. And so I'd kind of like to point out just a couple of things because during my three minutes, the conditions that do not presently exist in Las Vegas to bring refugees here, we know that and we're not planning on trying to have refugees here. We're trying to be supportive of other groups. So it says, therefore it be resolved, that Las Vegas New Mexico City Governing Body declares its support for the resettlement of refugees in New Mexico and calls upon other communities in the state to join them in supporting the stronger national effort to resettle the most vulnerable refugees, which we definitely feel is a real important part. There's also people that think that we have the qualifications to bring refugees here. We're a low economic area. We don't have really enough jobs for our own constituents here. We need to have ways to keep our people from moving out of Las Vegas because we're losing population. So we definitely were not trying to encourage refugees here. We were trying to be supportive of the over 21 million refugees worldwide and of the places in New Mexico that are willing to take them and have the ability to have a like group of people with like languages that could support them and have ways of training them for jobs that they could be resourceful and transition in a reasonable way. And so we weren't talking about illegal immigrants that were coming across. We weren't talking about other things. We were only talking about refugees. And it seemed like from, at least from the optic things that I read, that many of the people that were opposed to it were opposed for different reasons that, and so we were extremely disappointed that it didn't get any farther. We worked really, really hard on this. We've tried to work with other people in the state. And so we're hoping that you will reconsider and think about that it's good for the state to stand united for something that's really good. And I think helping women and children especially and refugees and their horrible situation where they are, even though it will not burden our city, at least we can be supportive of other cities that are trying to do that. So we hope that you will reconsider it and that it will come before you again for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Witslick who will be presenting on lodger tax.
Good evening. Witslick, I'm here from Main Street accompanied with Cindy, our ITI Director, and Stella Versiaga was sprinting to get here but didn't make it. And of course, I'm here with more good news about lodger tax. First, Main Street secured a $46,000 grant from the New Mexico Department of Tourism. This money matched with city lodger tax will secure four billboards on I-25, one south of Raton, one south of Wagon Mount, one lighted billboard in Albuquerque North at Alameda, and another lighted board at Buttegur's. This means that everybody driving from Albuquerque to the Colorado border on I-25 will know that Las Vegas, I mean that New Mexico has its own Las Vegas and that New Mexico's Las Vegas is both beautiful and historic. This tourism pundit marketing also includes advertising in publications with readership of 1.7 million in print and online. Second, Main Street is working on two additional proposals for even more marketing money to leverage what's available through lodger tax. Third, Main Street secured a $10,000 grant from P&amp;M to prepare construction-ready documents for infrastructure projects. This way, projects are ready for consideration if the city council passes the lodger tax advisory board recommendation to raise the lodger tax rate from 4% to 5% and dedicate the additional 1% for infrastructure projects. Fourth, Main Street and the city have selected a consultant and the update of the downtown action plan is underway. This will also identify projects that the city might want to fund with the 1% infrastructure lodger tax increase. Finally, Main Street submitted a proposal to finish the construction of the first floor of the city's E. Romero Ozen Fire Building as a fire and water museum with lodger tax to prepare the displaced. At this point, and I find this pretty wonderful, at this point, the Main Street and City of Las Vegas project is one of only 25 finalists nationwide. All in all, Main Street is making great progress in its partnership with the city and in leveraging city lodger tax with other monies. And it's only the first quarter of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Lane, resolution on refugees.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, Mr. Manager?
How are you?
Well, my name is Carol Line and I live in Ojus Rios Ranches, just near Romeroville. And I am here to express dismay with the action taken by this body with regard to the refugee resolution. As Rosie explained, I, we're not thinking that refugees would come to our city for the reasons that Rosie has already pointed out. And my dismay with the vote has to do with the feeling that that is a complete misrepresentation of the people of Las Vegas. And I can say that because for 10 years, I have been the chairperson for the Las Vegas Crop Hunger Walk. And I know up close and personal how generous and how open and how warm and how kind the people of our city are. And the vote that this body made with regard to a gesture to help people in need would deny that generosity. And that generosity is very real here. And I think that fear got in the way. I don't know what happened between the June meeting and the voting meeting, and I was not here for that meeting. But I fear, I fear that fear got in the way of doing the right thing. Fear that is unfounded. Refugees are not going to come to Las Vegas. They want to work and they want to be productive and they need to be. And they need to be supported by like-minded people, like nationality, people in places that can support them. And that is not going to happen in Las Vegas. And so I think we have to address ourselves not to unfounded fear, unsubstantiated fear. I think we have to address ourselves to the reality of an enormous humanitarian crisis and a way that we can, as Vince said earlier, love one another and help in some small way with this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we have Yolanda Cruz. She'll be talking about curb painting and road treatment.
Thank you. My name's Yolanda Cruz and I don't live in the city. I live in Safayao. But my parents do live in the city. They live on 644 Rio Arriba. And I've been here before to talk to you guys about this. And I don't think you guys have been able to see the picture, but I'll show you the picture. So they live on 644 Rio Arriba and the curb has been painted yellow almost all the way down in front of their home. I've tried working with this city manager on this issue from 7:29 till today. I've been ignored. I've been jerked around. I've been lied to. I've been laughed at and I've had enough. I've worked with city. I've worked with county. I've worked with state on many different issues. I have never been treated like that, never. You guys have been lied to. You guys have been told that this issue is resolved. It is not resolved. It is nowhere close to being resolved. I have sent messages, emails, phone calls from 7:29 until last week. I have been told that meetings would be set. I've been told that they would look into it. I have been told that my parents requested it to be painted, which is not true. I have been told that my dad doesn't know who's calling the city because he's fine with it being painted, which is not true. My mom is here, if you want to ask her. I've been told that it was painted because of visibility issues, which is fine, right up to a point. Halfway down the street is not going to solve visibility on a narrow street. That's the visibility issue. I've been told that too many people live and park there. I was told that today when I met with Mr. Trejo, Mr. Gentry, and Mr. Lohan, it's none of the city's business how many people live and park there. I have been told that if they park on the dirt, which is not the roadway, their vehicles will be towed, which I took pictures around town of vehicles parked between the roadway and the homes, which is city roadway, that are not being towed, that are not being sighted. And I asked what if it's not on the visibility part? I was told that they would be sighted. If it's not blocking visibility, but it's on the city roadway, they will be sighted. I was told that the drain is blocked if vehicles park there. You know who cleans that drain when it gets blocked with debris? My mother. My 70-year-old mother goes and cleans it with the shovel. The vehicles don't block the drain. Wait, they're not low riders. They don't block the drain. My dad is a disabled Vietnam veteran. I mentioned that today at the meeting. I was told that he walked fine when they talked to him. That is so rude. He has, you know, documents stating his disability. He's had numerous, he's had a pulmonary embolism and other numerous health issues. I don't need to sit there and listen to the city telling me that he walks fine and he should be able to park in the back of his house. And I'm going to show you that picture. I don't know if all of you have seen it. And then I'll be quiet because I know I'm overtime and I don't want to get thrown out. But my mother is here and they're not okay with that.
Ms. Cruz, could you please just get that picture to the clerk later? And the city council, she can present it to the council.
Okay. And I have over 100 other pictures around town where the drains are not painted, the curbs are painted a reasonable amount and where people are parked there and it's the same issues, same things.
Thank you very much.
And I have had it.
Next is Sonia Berg, resolution on refugees.
Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Sonia Berg. And again, as Carol stated, I do not live in the city, so I cannot vote or vote against any of you. But my life is here. I shop here. I go out to eat here. I socialize here. I have friends here. I go to movies. I go to events. So even though I don't live within the city limits, I am very concerned and supportive of the city. In June, there were, I believe, 17 people that spoke about the referendum. And Bob and Carol Pearson explained it thoroughly. In July, the Pearson's were away out of town with their family. And I actually was in town that afternoon and I came by and I took a peek at the agenda and it said that, the item was on the agenda and it said, Mayor Tonita says that the council isn't fully behind this resolution. And I'd been out of town with my husband and I was tired and I was here at the wrong time. So I saw that and I also had, so I went home. And I'd also been told by Bob and Carol that she had been assured that there was no need really for them to be here. So I don't know what happened at the meeting, but I'm flummoxed as to the reason that that support changed to denial. And as Carol spoke so well, refugees are people that are in desperate need. And of the people that have been relocated in the United States as refugees, it's my understanding from what the data I read, they've not committed any violent crimes, period. There's no evidence of that. They're just desperate people that fear for their life and they don't, their home has been destroyed probably or whatever, that it is so bad in their country that they have to find a better place for their family and their children. And we just wanted to support the people that are in that situation. And if any of you want to share with me what changed your mind, I would be interested in hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Catherine Duke, sale of property.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow Las Vagans. I'm presenting today that I put my property up on the market. Reason being, I'm older. It's time for me to find something smaller in town. And so there's cards and just a piece of paper I'll give you so you could take it with you later. So the property sits on I-25 and of course, it's not within the Las Vegas city, but I have city water and city gas. And so I thought that it sort of was appropriate to bring it to you. This is an aerial of the property. It has 10 acres and I'm just going to tell you what's on it. And then, of course, I don't even know if the city's interested, but I thought I would present it. It has about 10,000 square feet of indoor space where semis can be worked on or any other use. And of course, it is corrugated tin on the outside, but if you, if you sided it over the corrugated tin, they could be quite nice. It is right near the county work, I don't know what you would call it.
Public Works?
The Public Works. And so my thought was that the city may in time be the Public Works and also if they were going to do transfer of trash or waste, that it would be something that they might consider. It has 600 feet of frontage. It has well, a pump house. It has a weight station that's 79 feet long. It has a duplex with a living quarters and an office, which really could be turned into offices. And on the back of the property, there's a solar plant, which is under a 25-year lease and it goes, it takes, it goes to Mora. It gives electric to 240 homes. That's not part of this front 10 acres, but I would not offer it except to the city and I would carry the note. It has a full ADT alarm system. You could have a billboard also on the front of the property. It's already grandfathered in. And it has showers and bathrooms, a building, showers and bathrooms, and 15 tap sites for RVs, which could be turned into workstations for different things. I think that's about it. It is zoned agricultural. Of course, if you go before the city, San Miguel County, whatever you were going to use it for, they would have to, okay. And one of the things I would say to the city is, to me, infrastructure of the city is the most important thing, your trash, your water, your sewer. And each time, like the northern arterial or properties come up on the market and the city doesn't even consider them or think about them and they sell, the price goes up. So I've made my price, not what I started out. And I'll talk to the city. If they're interested in it, I brought it way down. So thank you very much for your time and have a nice evening.
Thank you. That concludes your public input.
Okay, thank you. For the record, I'd like to make a statement that as the mayor, I did not vote on the resettlement resolution. That was an error in reporting and I believe there was a redaction to that as well. There was no tie. The only time that I vote is when there is a tiebreaker. I want to clarify. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is the city manager's report. Just a quick update on what we're working on. I think Wood and Cindy Collins talked about us working together with New Mexico True. Our staff is putting up most of the hand kind with our media arts person with the net and the rest of the staff there and it's working very well. I'm looking forward to what comes out in the magazine and our billboards and hopefully we'll get people coming our way. The other thing is our flooding. We continue to address flooding issues throughout the city. We are working with the county to do a joint project on some of the roadways that is in the county, but we have our utilities in there. So it's, it becomes our problem also. So we're going to work together with them to help out some of the drainage to prevent more flooding. A lot of sandbags, we still have some sandbags at the Public Works. If anybody needs them, let us know. We'll deliver. We'll try to help you put them, place them where we think would be effective where there's flooding. We're not supposed to get any more heavy rains for the rest of the week. Will give us time to work on some of these areas. We are going to be moving in bigger equipment on Cinder Road, right by the softball parks to try to open up that whole drainage area. We're going to be working hopefully with the county on that to try to clear that, clear that area. Some of the areas that are being effective are areas where the drainage that we have in there cannot support the type of rain, the storms that we're having. The ground is saturated and no place for the water to go. So we're going to have to continue monitoring all that. We're getting ready for the parks, getting them ready for the fall and winter. The crews have been working very closely on the parks. We are also working, the senior citizens just send a lot of pictures of their new vehicles that they got through their grant, through their ICIP. So they'll have transportation for hot meals and everything else. I'm real happy with the progress. We are working, we are going to be working on the parking lot drainage that they're having problems there at the senior center and start designing and preparing for that. Staff is continuing, working on ordinances on some of the ones that need to be revised in their respective departments. We are working as far as on the safety manual. Robbie Duran is working closely with HUB Insurance to put together, to update that manual and get it to Mayor and Council for approval. There's some areas that we're going to be including in there is how to handle the syringes that we're finding in parks, how to dispose of them. Robbie Duran has done a good job. We've received some containers, some that are mountable, that we can put in some of the parks to hopefully have people drop their syringes in those containers. We're going to have a location here of Public Works and possibly at Utilities where people, if they need to dispose their own, there's a drop. So we're going to address that and we're going to continue to address that issue that we're finding in our parks. I did meet with Superintendent Cal Cooper, did a walk-through through the Legion Park School, never been there before, and it gave me an opportunity to see what the potentials are of possibly doing something with these buildings. They are planning, there has been discussions of the city schools demolishing that building. There's 21 classrooms in that building. There's a cafeteria. There's a place to feed the people. There's a playground. There's a basketball court. There's a baseball field behind it. It has so many potentials that we're looking and trying to help them possibly maybe relocate, maybe establish a shelter for domestic violence, possibly Samaritan House. They need a place to prepare the food, to They need a place to prepare the food, to feed. So we're looking at all these ideas. We're going to be presenting that to our housing committee so that they'll know what's out there. The same thing with Memorial Middle School, we're going to start looking at that place. I hate to see these buildings being demolished and never have an opportunity to do anything with it. So we're going to try to help the schools with finding ways to utilize those buildings. So we've been busy, very busy. We're waiting for the budget to come back from DFA. We'll get back and regroup and see what they approve and what they didn't approve, and see what our parameters are for us to move forward. So as far as that, we've pretty much, I understand the police department have already opened up interviews for the four vacancies, they had interviews. I'm glad we're moving forward with that. The other two that council approved in the last meeting are not, we won't have that approval until the DFA sends back our budget. At that time, then we'll let the chief know to start advertising for that. They're also advertising for three vacancies in their dispatching department. So a lot going on, some transfers. But then the city, we're just moving people that have their CDLs to areas where we need them to drive equipment. But other than that, you know, just day-to-day operations.
Questions, Collins?
No.
I have some questions. I have a couple. What is the update on the alarm for the city offices?
I'm going to be meeting with Chief Montoya to see where is the best place to get that up and running. I still like the E Romero where we used to have it. I think that's a good location to have an alarm. But we're going to try to look at different places and see what the cost will be. But it is a big concern, and I think you raised the flag on that, Mayor, and we're going to address it. We did have a tornado warning, and I think it'd have been good just to hear that alarm just to prepare people. So we're going to be working on that.
And what is the status of the lighting around the park and the exits, first exit especially, in the city offices?
Yeah, I have the, the Streets Department have really been working hard on getting all the lights worked on. We have north-south off-ramps, the lights are already up and running, they're on. The Streets Department is also applying for a grant from PNM for LED lighting for Bridge Street and around the park. So we're hoping that we get that grant to replace that lighting. And so we'll continue working on that. But everything on north and south off-ramps, the lights are on.
Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, since a lot of comments have been that the drains are clogged up, what is the purpose of that big blue Vector truck? Would that be the solution to unclogged drains?
It really does help us. They're able to push water at a high rate of speed, a lot of pound per pressure, and we're able to clear a lot of those drains. The crews have been working on all the drains that we have problems. I've seen them out there with rakes and trying to clear it. But the Vector truck does play a big part in trying to open up those drainage pipes.
So if the community out there sees that big blue truck, don't get afraid.
That's what they're doing. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Please continue.
Next, we have the finance report, and Anne Marie will be presenting.
May I have your first report, finance report for the year 2017-18? We should be at 8% of our budget as far as revenues and expenditures. We're actually at 7% in both revenues and expenditures. Our total revenues were approximately $810,000, and our expenditures were $820,000. So we'll keep an eye on it and see how we progress for the rest of the year. Mr. City Manager did say that we haven't received our approval for our final budget, and once we do that, I believe we'll bring it back to Mayor and Council. The Recreation Department, they're also at 7% of their revenues and expenditures. The Open Swim was, we have a bit of an issue, and I think it's something that Pam and I will need to work with. There was revenues in Open Swim, and it'll just be, possibly, it's probably being receded into a wrong account code. So Pam and I will be working on that very shortly. And the Enterprise Funds as well, they're at 7% of their revenues. They actually should be at 8%, and that's for, that's general fund, recreation, and enterprise funds as well. The Enterprise Funds is at 6% of budget. We'll see a bit of an increase next month because we are doing insurances and property liability and the workings contract will be coming through as well. And with that, all questions, Madam Mayor?
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gallegos, on the Recreation, and I don't know if Mr. Manager can answer this or not, but I heard there was a leak in the roof of the recreation. Can you explain?
Yeah, that was in Phase 2. That's the gym area.
The gym area.
Yeah, that's not the area that the contractor worked on. What we're seeing is a lot of the screws that hold the pro panel down are lifting, and we have some separation of the material up on the roof. So we're addressing that.
Has that been fixed, or?
We got, we're working on the quotes, quotes to start addressing that. Thank you.
Question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is the consent agenda.
What is the pleasure of work?
Madam Mayor? I move approval of consent agenda item number one, which is to award requests for proposals 2018-2 for engineering services for dams and reservoirs to AECOM, and enter into it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Local?
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Can she, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Okay. Ms. Gallegos?
Next are our business items, approval or disapproval to appoint Lorraine Ortiz as a Housing Director. I, the city manager, am pleased to recommend that we hire Mrs. Ortiz. I think she has a lot to offer the city. Her background is well-rounded as far as legal and organization, and I think will be a compliment, and we'll continue moving that department forward. I feel that in that department, we have a good staff that will support her, and I think, I expect nothing but good things, and that is my recommendation at this point.
Questions, comments? What is the pleasure of work?
Madam Mayor?
Please continue.
I move approval to appoint Lorraine Ortiz as the Housing Director.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Local?
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Counselor Romero?
I got something. Richard, I asked some ordinance evidence on property on 644 Leal Leva, and not till the day, and it's been four weeks. Why?
What? I didn't understand the question, I'm sorry.
I text.
What text?
On my phone. I send it on 8-2 and then 8-7.
Right. Now I'm going to have to look that up, because I know I sent it back to you that Levi Code Enforcement was working and putting together the pictures and also the file.
So who should I ask?
I will, Levi, will you get that, get that file and send it to Counselor Romero?
Yes.
And deliver it, please.
Okay.
Second. Counselor Casey?
Thank you. I have several things that I'd like to discuss. One, I had requested the ordinance on the Jake breaks, and the city clerk did send them to me. I had a constituent that called me up and asked me to meet with her, and I did. And she has been documenting every time that a semi comes in front of her house, she lives on 7th Street. And she's been documenting since July of 2016, and her last documentation was August the 2nd. So these-
Do you have the address, Counselor?
It's 919-7. And she has the times that the semis are coming through, 5:30 a.m., 10:35 at night. I mean, she's documented everything. And she and the neighbors are kind of tired of having the semis come through a residential area. She said if they don't use the Jake breaks, then we can still hear that loud, you know, when they stop. And some of the owners of houses that are made of brick are also complaining about that because the brick is falling off of their houses because of the pounding of the trucks as they go through. And I don't know if you want this list or not.
I do.
Okay, and I'll put her name on it so you can contact her if you'd like.
Okay.
But she really would appreciate something being done about that.
Cassandra? Could you include this for the-
And also, in conjunction with that, another constituent that lives across the street from the Eagles on, close to Tilden and Grand, had requested that we have signage to keep the large trucks off of 7th Street because they turn off at that light in front of the gas station that's there by Lincoln Park. And they come up 7th Street instead of staying on Grand Avenue. And you had told me that we would get signage from the Highway Department, and you were waiting for correct language. I'd like to know what's being done there.
Okay. Again, is that, that's by the Allsops?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's kind of the same thing, because if you can keep them off 7th Street, then that'll fix the problem for the people that I just talked about with the bricks falling off of their houses and all the noise they're keeping all the neighborhoods awake. Okay, and the last issue I have is I got a call today from people that I know that work at West Las Vegas Schools, and they're not real happy because the, I guess the superintendent has told them that the Police Department will not be allowed to coach anymore. And they're concerned. People are upset because the Police Department has been providing coaching services, some for as long as 10 years, according to what I was told this afternoon. There's, they're concerned because they feel that the police are a positive influence on the kids. They're concerned because it's going to hurt not just the kids, but the school district itself, because they depend on the work that the police officers are doing. And I was told that there are several officers that have been coaching for over 10 years. And I'm just kind of curious as to why now is it not acceptable anymore when it has been for so long? And also, I'd like to know why, you know, if this is something that you're mandating, why are you doing it? Because according to our own ordinance, it says the Chief of Police is the executive head and department director of the Police Department. The Police Chief is invested with a responsibility for the total administration and operation of the Police Department. So I think that, to me, that means that the Police Department has already a director. And although you're the city manager, I don't think that the ordinance specifies that you also run the Police Department.
Let me read our personnel ordinance. 66-66, outside employment. Authorization, the employee may request authorization to pursue outside employment from their respective department director. Employee's attendance record will be reviewed prior to granting such authorization. Such request is subject to approval of the city manager. That is our personnel ordinance.
Okay, well-
And I've also, and also, ma'am, I've asked all the directors to submit to me anyone who has applied for outside employment. I finally got that from the chief a couple of days ago. But I do have the authority to allow for outside if I feel, and based on the testimony that we're shorthanded at the Police Department, and the time away from work to coach is taking that time away from their job.
Okay, well, it's been my understanding that at least two of the people who coach do it on a volunteer basis, so they're not paid.
Right.
And they're not considered employees of the district, so that's another issue that I think maybe needs to be addressed.
And I think the only one that's approved to coach is the chief.
Exactly.
That was approved by, that was approved by the previous administration.
Yes. Okay, and if that is so, then my question is, why were the others allowed to coach for 10 years and nothing was ever said?
That was a decision that the previous administration made. During the time that I was a counselor, I called a special meeting to approve, and we discussed this, Counselor, but well, Counselor Howell was not present at that meeting. And one of the concerns was, in an open session, that they were not going to allow the chief at that point in time to coach at all. So we did discuss thoroughly, and one of the decisions made was, and it was publicly made, that they allowed the chief to coach, but no other teacher was going to be allowed within his jurisdiction. And that was the agreement. And they did allow him.
Well, I'm concerned because as a former superintendent for West, it concerns me because they were not informed until recently, and I don't know if it was today or yesterday or when it was.
Counselor Casey, they were informed a long time ago.
Okay, well, I was not told that today. Okay? And so the person who called me had just found out and was upset because-
And I shouldn't say "they." I should say the chief was informed.
Okay. I don't know about when the school was informed, the person that called me didn't tell. But apparently, the superintendent told staff and board members today. And so the call that I got was from someone that is closely associated with West Las Vegas Schools, and asked, you know, what's going on? And I said, I don't know, I'll ask at the council meeting this evening. And so that's why I'm asking. It's just, you know, if they had been informed, I think, a little sooner, maybe if staff had been, if their staff had been informed sooner, then they could have made arrangements, maybe. But right now, they're like caught in a bad situation, and people are upset, and I think maybe we need to rethink that because of-
Actually, Counselor Casey, the chief was informed, so it was his duty to inform the rest of his staff.
I'm not talking about the police, I'm talking about school staff.
Oh, I see.
Okay. I don't know what the chief has done. I talked to school staff. I did not talk to the Police Department.
Okay, so could you note that as point of clarification?
Yes.
And just maybe that this is something that needs to be reconsidered so as to, I mean, work better with the community. I think the Police Department does provide a service, and perhaps if you can work with the Police Department and the chief to ensure that the people who are coaching at the- who are coaching at the schools are doing it on their own time and not during work time, and so that they can continue providing that service, not only to the school district, but to the kids. Because I think it's really important that the kids have a positive role model.
Sure is.
And what could be better than having police to be working with the kids?
And I think that, Madam Mayor, Madam Counselor, I did bring that up early on with the Directors in a Director Meeting about who has the authorization to allow for outside employment. We did bring it up. We did. We also did bring it up with the Chief last year, when I found out that there was all these coaches. He said it was his prerogative. And I think the Mayor and I, when we talked to him, we thought, "No, that has to be approved by Mayor and Council." This year, if you look... well, I don't know how far you want to go into this, but I see it with... in view of the testimonies that everyone has been making here about short staff, and you look at the schedule and the hours that they spend away from their job, from the city, in games or tournaments. You can see it's a big impact on-
And public safety is number one.
And I think the Chief and the police could continue to provide that service in visiting the schools and doing what they should be doing. But at this time, there's a lot of time spent out there if you're looking at these schedules, how much time is spent on the... whether it's practice or games. So...
I would like to request from the City Clerk the minutes of the meeting when the Council gave permission to the Chief to coach, so that I know exactly what the motion was and what it said, just for my personal certification. I would appreciate that greatly.
Certainly.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Anything else to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little addition to what Counselor Casey said. You know, in this town, we don't have a YMCA or Boys and Girls Club yet. We don't have that many mentors for our youth. And ever since I've been in this town, I've heard that we are not doing anything for the youth. That's just the comments that I've heard. And here we have our Police Department that is willing to do that for us, to mentor kids, to give the kids some type of really goal to look at the Police Department and possibly future policemen and women. And because they provide a good mentorship, a good role model, because of their authoritarian look, their uniforms, their attitudes, their passion for our community, the passion for our youth. And I think that's one reason why they're doing it. And some of their kids are in the sports program that they coach also. And the teachers and the professors and the Superintendents look at this, and they appreciate what the Police Department is doing for their kids. Because they're having a struggle in both East and West in how their kids are acting. And they need these type of mentorship. And if they're doing volunteering, if they're doing it on their own time, then I don't see a problem with that. But, you know, you have to sit down with the Chief and go over it again. If he says that they're doing it under their own flex time or their own time, then, you know, take a look at that again. But we cannot afford to lose this type of mentorship for our youth. I think that is well needed. I would also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Manager, for taking care of a lot of the issues that I brought up to you in regards to District Two. I know that Dr. Court was appreciative of you coming by and talking to him. Hopefully, we can provide him more sandbags and things. I know that Ms. Mays at the 408 Diego Street, hopefully, we went back there and really took a look at the situation. And also, Mr. Luhan, Levi Luhan, is going to that 410 Diego Street to take a look at that empty building, or empty house, because it's causing a hazard over there. This... Mother Nature has provided us a lot of, you know... what do they call it? Carilla or hennies? Anyways, we have the responsibility to respond to all of the concerns, and it's important that you're doing that, so... And sometimes, some of them goes through the wayside because we're doing so many things, and we lose contact on some of them. So let's bring in the ones that we lose away and bring it back into focus so we can take care of them. I think the vector truck is very important for us to utilize. And I know, especially on Christine Drive, that big drain that goes all the way across. My neighbors are out there with their shovels, and not shovels, but rakes, taking away from the debris from that drain, because the rain brought all that there and allows the water to go over it and into the properties.
And I think I mentioned to you that DOT contacted Public Works. They do have millings. But we have to apply for them in a letter to describe where we're going to use them, how we're going to use them. So we're also working on it.
And some of the constituents are saying that when they call Public Works, they said they can only have two sandbags, and that's not enough for their utilization. So I told them to give you a call, to ask you to facilitate that. But thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm finally finished.
Yes.
I just want to request that the City Manager and Mr. Luhan from Code Enforcement work with Mrs. Cruz's parents to fix the situation as soon as possible. It's creating a lot of distress for the parents. And, you know, we shouldn't be creating stress for people who already have enough just with everyday living situations. So if we can address that quickly and to everyone's satisfaction, I think-
We will.
Wonderful thing.
We will.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Howell?
Thank you. I just want to make an advertisement like. November 10th or November 11th is Veterans Day. And I'm a veteran and also a Marine veteran. November 10th is our Marine Corps birthday. So what I want to do, and I've talked to certain people, we're going to do a Military Ball this year and to have the all five services represented in this event. And I've found a venue, possibly the Palms Ballroom. That's a possible venue. And I just want anyone that would like to help me in coordinating this, please give me a call. And my phone number, 718-9361. I think it's going to be a great... Can you imagine the military band marching from Grand Avenue up National, through the park, and coming and ending at the Palms Ballroom and with the flags and everything? And we want to honor our veterans that have received medals, silver medals, and all the other acknowledgements that they've received.
Counselor Howell, who's sponsoring the event?
Well, I... myself and some others that I'm trying to get ahold of. I know that I spoke to retired Staff Sergeant Gallegos from the National Guard, and I've talked to Sergeant Ludi, Gary Ludi.
Have you spoken to Karen? Karen from Veterans?
No, Karen, no, not yet.
She's very good.
Right. Yeah, we're going to do that, yes.
Yeah, and meet with Annette Belate as soon as possible, so she can put that on our calendar and possibly do some advertising.
Yeah, wonderful. I think our veterans need that, and we're going to try to make this an annual event.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We don't have leave for executive sessions, are we?
No.
I need a motion for adjournment.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Leave adjourned. Thank you all very much.